By television, there is a Zoom number, a meeting ID and all of the things on the screen. So if you would like to join us via Zoom, please try that, but be patient with us. This is all new and we may have a little bit of technical issues with the Wi-Fi and all of the things. So if you do call in and you get kicked off, try to call back. So we want to hear from you if that's how you would like to join us. So we'll call our meeting to order and if you'll please join me for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please. Councilmember Losi?
Here.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Here.
Mayor Long?
Here.
Thank you, Buffy. All right, now I'm supposed to try to get to my proclamation. Here we go. I'm trying something new on my thing and I don't know how to do it, so be patient. That was not it. It's not showing. Thank you. Jeremy just handed me my thing. Thank you. All right, we have a proclamation for Parks Make Life Better Month, July 2022. Whereas parks and recreation make lives and communities better now and in the future, and whereas residents value recreation as it provides positive alternatives for children and youth to reduce crime and mischief, it promotes the arts, it increases social connections, aids in therapy, and promotes lifelong learning. And whereas residents value their parks for access to outdoor spaces for children and adults to play and be active, exercise in group sports, and whereas parks provide access to the serenity and the inspiration of nature and outdoor spaces as well as preserve and protect the historic, natural, and cultural resources in our community. And whereas the residents of Fortuna, including children, youth, families, adults, seniors, businesses, community organizations, and visitors benefit from the wide range of programs throughout the parks and recreational facilities provided by the Fortuna Parks and Recreation Department. And whereas the Fortuna Parks and Recreation Department urges all of its residents to recognize that parks and recreation enriches the lives of its residents and visitors as well as adding value to the community's homes and neighborhoods. And whereas July is celebrated across the nation as Parks and Recreation Month. Now therefore, it be it resolved, the City of Fortuna hereby proclaims July 2022 as Parks Make Life Better Month, and in doing so urges all its citizens to use and enjoy its parks, trails, open space, facilities, and recreation opportunities. Signed this first day of August, City of Fortuna, by Mayor Shulong. Are you accepting this? I don't have it here. So I have nothing to give you. So come on up and accept the nothing.
No problem. Good evening, City Council. Yeah, I mean, I think the proclamation states it very well on all the benefits that our parks and recreation programs provide to our citizens and the public. It's a very positive thing. It really is that one factor that creates that quality of life in lots of cities and lots of communities. So, and I will say that, you know, Fortuna is very lucky to have a Parks Crew and Recreation Crew that really is passionate about what they do in creating great activities and park spaces for our public. I mean, our parks are, you know, amidst some of the challenges that we face. We've got some really exceptional parks and we've got a Parks Crew that really takes their job very seriously and takes a lot of pride in what they do. So we're really proud of that and I just wanted to thank City Council for recognizing how important parks and recreation is to each community. So, thank you.
Well, we just came off of our big July event month and without our Parks Crew, we would not have been able to do any of that, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thanks for your hard work.
Yep.
I want to add something real quick. Unfortunately, we've had some vandalisms in the park recently. So I would like to encourage anybody, if you see anything that doesn't look right in the park, please call it in because we've got to get this stopped. Thank you.
All right, for some reason, my agenda on my paper is not the same as in my computer. So we're kind of all over the place here, sorry. Introduction of New Police Officer Chief Day. Am I on the wrong meeting?
Yes.
Yeah.
Since Monday, August 1st. Oh, June 21st, 2022. That could be my problem. I'm all over the place, you guys. See what happens when we don't have meetings? I don't even know what to do. Okay, you'll find mine. Thank you. All right. We don't have any new employees. Sorry. Made that up. All right, so now we are at oral comments from the public. If anyone from the public here would like to speak to us about something that is not on the agenda tonight, please come up to the podium and you have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Arlene Spires. I've been in Fortuna since 1976. I have a background in business processes. And the reason I'm introducing myself to the council this evening is because I'm running for city council so that I can give back to this great city. Again, my name is Arlene Spires. Thank you.
Thank you, Arlene. All right, now Tammy has me off fixed up. We can continue. Anyone else from the public have comments? All right, seeing none, we'll close public comments and move on to our consent calendar. Our consent calendar is a little tricky tonight. Does anyone wish to pull anything? We need to approve everything except J. If no one wants to pull anything.
I'll go ahead and approve consent or move to approve consent calendar A through I as well as K.
All right.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve consent items A through I and K. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so J is a little tricky because we can approve Astor, Dev, Forest Hills, Kenwood Meadows. If someone will make a motion to do that.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve those items. And now we are going to do Rancho Buena Vista.
And I'm recusing myself on that?
Abstain. Yeah, so we need a motion to approve that one.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, with Mike Losi abstaining. And now we need to do Golikson and Wright. So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to do those two. And all in favor?
Aye.
And I'm abstaining. Do you get all that, Buffy? Okay, okay. All right, thanks, guys. So our city council business, the first one is a public hearing. First reading to consider amendment of the Fortuna Municipal Code regarding state mandated procedures for SB 9 urban lot splits and two-unit projects by amending Title 17 zoning regulations of the Fortuna Municipal Code, Chapter 17.09, state mandated procedures in Title 16 subdivision section 16.04.070, urban lot splits ordinance 2022-752. Staff report, please.
Mayor and honorable council members. I do have a PowerPoint, but I'm having a little bit of technical difficulties here, so I'm just going to jump into it without the nice visuals, the handy visual aid. Actually, here we go. Thank you, Buffy. Let me just see if I can.
As Liz is pulling that up, one thing that I will mention is this is an ordinance that we brought to the city council originally. And one of the comments from council was, you know, can you, you know, should the design standards from the ADU ordinance are similar be brought into it? And so the council asked that this go back to the Planning Commission. And so after following that, staff took it back to the Planning Commission. It's coming back to the council with incorporations of some of the requested design standards. So this will be the first reading if approved.
So as you recall, this did come before the council as an urgency ordinance in January. And then that was to implement, immediately implement the SB 9 standards. And then the Planning Commission took it up as a non-urgency ordinance. I think that was in February with a recommendation to the council. And then I think it was in April that the council heard it and did ask that the design standards of the city's ADU ordinance be considered. So just to kind of make the, you know, for neighborhood compatibility and privacy considerations. So the Planning Commission did hear that at a recent meeting and did make the recommendation for the design standards that are in your packet. So SB 9 allows, of course, it allows housing developments containing two residential units on one lot. And it also allows lot splits with, without discretionary review. So they're basically principally permitted. And then cities may adopt local ordinances to implement the provisions of SB 9 and adopt objective zoning standards, which is what we're doing tonight for the, for the regular non-urgency ordinance. The summary of just really briefly, the main points, I mean, there, you know, SB 9 and the city's ordinance has a lot of details in it. The main, I think, considerations, it allows a 1,200 square foot minimum lot size, which is radically smaller than the regular zoning standards and subdivision standards. The local ordinance in the urgency ordinance allows maximum size units of 800 square feet. So it limits the size of the two-unit developments. You know, and that's for neighborhood, you know, protection of neighborhood compatibility. Minimum, or sorry, maximum setback of four feet. Minimum, no, not more than four feet. So SB 9 requires, the state law requires cities to allow up to four feet if the units cannot be developed otherwise. So it really, you know, is very strong on this infill, small lot, small unit development. One parking space per unit. The local code prohibits re-subdivisions after an SB 9 split. So once it's undertaken, it can't be, you know, resplit again. And that is, that's a deed restriction as well. So future owners know that they won't be able to split that lot. And then a three-year owner occupancy for the splits. And there's no occupancy requirement for a two-unit development. And then, so the council urgency ordinance. Okay, so we've discussed those. The, so the proposed design standards, it's really, you know, you've, you've heard this at two previous meetings. So, you know, I won't go over the whole ordinance itself unless you have any questions. Of course, we'll be happy to answer those. But the design standards specifically, again, they were considered by the Planning Commission. And they're really to, you know, the design standards are to protect neighborhood compatibility, to kind of prevent over infill or at least, you know, the design standards prevent, kind of try to prevent like patchwork development, you know, just more, kind of be consistent with the city's, you know, with the expectation of a single-family neighborhood. So I'm sorry, that kind of threw me off not having the overhead. Let me get to my staff report. So the design standards. And they start, if we, you know, I won't have the overhead. So if you wanted to follow along in the packet, it's Business Agenda Item 5A, Page 2 of 26. For consistency with existing units on sites already developed with an existing residential unit, basically the new unit would be required to match the existing structure with regards to color, building materials, windows, doors, roofing, light fixtures, and that type of thing. So, you know, so both units on a two-unit development would at least have some compatibility. And then for new development of two units on a lot, both units would need to have similar architectural styles, so kind of the same thing. And then garage conversion, so the code does, the state law and the local code does require that cities allow garages to be converted to residences without actually replacing the garage. That's, you know, pretty, pretty open-ended. But the design standard for that is that the garage conversion, the exterior be designed so that, you know, the, the appearance of the garage through siding, you know, it's not apparent that it was a garage. So it just kind of will blend in with existing residents. Entrance orientation on a detached unit, the, the building must face the front or the interior parcel. So that, and that's to protect neighbors, so that the neighbor on the side doesn't have an entrance facing it. So, you know, it'll, it'll face the front or the interior. And then there's a number of privacy impacts or to protect against privacy impacts on adjacent properties. Walls, so if the building is within eight, eight feet of an interior or a side property line, the wall, the, there must be a six-foot fence. And windows must be clerestory or translucent windows for all windows facing that adjacent property. So and a clerestory window must, would need to be at least five and a half feet above the adjoining floor. So no windows or, you know, really sort of imposing windows facing that side property line to protect privacy there. And the same thing for second-story decks and balconies. They may not be closer than 10 feet from the side or rear property line of the, of an adjoining, single-family dwelling. And similar with outdoor stairs. They must be, they may not be on the side property facing or the side of the property facing a residential neighbor. So they would need to be on an interior property line. And then there's a table of architectural details for historic properties. And those are really pretty similar to the ones that I just went over. They're a little bit more detailed with, and this is just for historic properties. So the siding, you know, the exterior materials need to match the, need to be of wood, fiber cement, or board and baton. So it kind of describes or lists a number of siding materials. Similar with windows and door materials. And window proportions, there's a ratio for window proportions. And roof materials, architectural composition shingles, clay tile, slate, or non-reflective standing seam metal. And then roof pitch has a standard. So those are for historic properties. The city actually doesn't, historic properties are districts. And the city does not have a historic district at this time. But the code is still written to protect, you know, in the future if one is adopted. You know, we have a nice historic downtown where it would be feasible to create a historic district. There is one historic property. It's the large residence at Ninth and N Street. And I had a picture of it. Oh, thanks. That'd be great. Sorry, it's a little laptop issues here. Yeah, so it was just fun when, you know, we looked, we checked the historic, the National. Well, he's looking that up. The National Register of Historic Places. And it's the Gashaw Mudgeet House at 8209th Street, built in 1884. So it kind of blended in with the historic standards that, you know, are being considered. And that parcel is, it's a very large parcel with a large yard and definitely has the potential to be, you know, divided through an SB 9 subdivision split. So in this regard, it would be. Okay. Great. That's his merits. So yeah, this is the Gunshaw Mudgeet House, a Gashaw Mudgeet House at Ninth and N. So that's on the National Historic Register of Historic Places. And so that, you know, this is an example of how those historic standards, you know, could be implemented. And it would just be really, you know, it's written, I think all of these standards are written broadly enough where there's some flexibility. Yet, you know, there's integrity, you know, through implementation and considering the design that an applicant is proposing for two units or considering existing residences just to be compatible with those. And again, you know, this is really for privacy protection with the setback, you know, and the deck and the outdoor stairs, privacy and just neighborhood compatibility. So there is a text, I also wanted to recommend a text change in the, in the ordinance itself that's attached to your staff report. It's really just an editing, a minor editing where, since we took this from the accessory dwelling unit code, there are a couple of places where we didn't pick up accessory dwelling unit. So we just want to delete the accessory dwelling and just leave the unit. So it should just apply to a unit and not an accessory dwelling unit. So if we could make that change as well. And so staff recommends the first reading. So this would, really you've considered it before. This is, the code calls this a first reading.
Does anyone from the council have questions for Liz?
Just clarification. With regard to consistency with existing units under the objective design standards versus the architectural, architectural details on the nonhistoric property, there are no requirements? And what, what's the difference there?
So, no, I want to thank you for calling that out. And that is on my PowerPoint, that the nonhistoric columns should be deleted because as you have observed, they are not consistent with the, you know, the standards, the written-out standards. So it shouldn't say no requirement because there are requirements. So we want to delete that first column for nonhistoric properties.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So Liz, I had another one on setbacks and building coverage. Are we still going with the 35% lot coverage? So if the lot was 2,400 square feet, the building couldn't be more than 35%, which is 840 square feet.
Yeah, that's how it's written that we would maintain that at this point. I know that's something that the city has considered revisiting in the code, the 35% lot coverage.
Okay. Any other questions from the council for Liz? Seeing none, we'll open it to the public. Would anybody from the public like to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to hold the first reading of ordinance 2022-752. Read by title only and continue the public hearing to Monday, August 15, 2022, for the second reading.
With corrections?
That Liz said, yeah.
Yes.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Buffy? Ordinance 2022-752, an ordinance of the city council of the City of Fortuna, amending Chapter 17.09, state mandated procedures of Title 17, zoning regulations of the Fortuna Municipal Code, and by amending Section 16.04.070, urban lot splits of Title 16, subdivisions, and determining the ordinance to be exempt from CEQA and repealing urgency ordinance number 751. Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long? Moving on to our next item, with the author, authorize the addition of a public works project manager position to the organizational chart and place the city engineer at salary classification step F54 in lieu of an ongoing recruitment for a city engineer. Merritt?
So I'm going to hand this one over to Brendan. He put this together. But really, the reason that we have this item on the council agenda, it's been a very tough hiring market and we really need to find some more help in public works. We're limited to staff. Our public works director, city engineer, has been doing all of our project work as well as the city engineering and development review. And so Brendan put the staff report together with it. I'll hand it over to him and let him explain this to the council.
Yes, thank you, Merritt. Honorable mayor, city council, thank you for your time this evening. And Sue, as you mentioned, we will be moving on with my staff recommendation, which is to add a public works project manager position to the organizational chart. So as many of you probably know, following the departure of the deputy director of public works in September of last year, we've been a little bit short-staffed in our public works management, mid-management positions. But we moved forward with some staffing reorganization. And that started with the approval to recruit for a public works director in January of this year. And that ultimately culminated in myself accepting that position in April. So with me moving into the public works director's position, that opened up the city engineer position, which we immediately began to recruit for in April of this year. And unfortunately, after the first recruitment, we were unsuccessful and we did not receive any qualified applicants for that position. It has been a tough hiring market over the last couple of years, as Merritt had mentioned. And we have had various opportunities to outreach to other local consultants and to other municipalities to kind of see what their strategy is and what their success has been with recruiting in these types of positions. And we've been hearing the same thing. It's, it's very hard to recruit right now for that mid-to-mid-high-level licensed engineer here locally in Humboldt. So recognizing the immediate need to alleviate portions of the workload from the public works director, staff directed, or staff decided to perform a second posting of the city engineer position and also to advertise concurrently for a new position, which is the public works project manager position being considered here this evening. So the hope that we as staff had with doing this secondary recruitment as well is that we would have a qualified candidate for the city engineer, which is the identified area of need that we had the most of in the public works department. But in recruiting concurrently for a project manager, if we didn't have a successful engineer candidate, maybe we could have a broader applicant pool. The project manager would be a non-licensed position. It hopefully would have, you know, more applicants that would be interested and qualified in order to apply for the job. So if filled, the project manager position could also offset a large portion of the current workload, just a different portion than maybe would have been expected of the city engineer position. So we, we did do this, also reaching out to some local jurisdictions, including Eureka. Eureka has had some similar troubles in recruiting for engineering positions in their public works department. They have moved to in recent years employing more project managers to do a lot of the mid-level work in their department. It's been a successful move for them and they will attest to saying quite a few of their best employees in those divisions now are their project manager staff. So with some of this in mind, we decided to move forward recruiting for both positions again in June. And those recruitments closed in July. And again, we had no qualified applicants for the city engineer position. We did have five applicants for the project manager position, four of which were qualified and two of which, I would note, were highly qualified for the position. We did decide to move forward with interviews for the two highly qualified staff, or the two highly qualified applicants. And staff ultimately has identified one of those two as a very well-qualified candidate that actually works professionally as an engineer and has an engineering background. They just have yet to obtain their professional licensure. And so they would be qualified for the project manager position. And I believe with obtaining their qualifications and their, with, you know, more experience in the, in the public works realm specifically at the city and with obtaining their professional licensure, you know, they would be a candidate that could be qualified for in the future for the city engineer position. So therefore, with, you know, kind of with all that being said, right now it is the staff, it's the staff's recommendation that the council approve the addition of a public works project manager position in lieu of an ongoing recruitment for the city engineer, given that we've had difficulty in recruiting for that position and we do have some qualified candidates identified for this position that we are proposing tonight. I have included in the staff report a draft amended full-time pay rate schedule and organizational chart that is available for your review. So in addition to seeking approval for the addition of this position, staff is also seeking council approval to award up to step three on the salary scale for this particular recruitment, which is 12% above the base salary for the position. And per municipal code, I believe, any starting employee above, that is to be started 10% or more above the base scale does require council's approval. So with that, I would just like to note that we don't request this approval lightly. And I would like to note that both of our applicants that we had were well-qualified and they bring with them experience and qualifications far beyond the minimal qualifications that we were looking for for this position. So we do believe that it would be warranted. And it is unlikely that we would actually be able to hire somebody as qualified as these applicants if we weren't ready to take that step. So if this new classification is approved, the public works director would continue to serve as the city engineer in the meantime and provide oversight to the public works project manager position. And the engineer position would remain on the org chart but be frozen until sometime in the future when it could be filled. Ideally, the project manager position would be qualified and. Ideally, the project manager position would be qualified and, and competitive for this position in the future with professional licensure. And I'd like to note here, lastly, that both positions would not be filled at the same time, the idea is that we'd be moving in this direction so that we could, you know, get a, get another staff member on board to be taking care of, you know, work in the public works department, and in the future, if we were to unfreeze the city engineer, that would come with the freezing of the public works project manager position. So as this is an under-hire for the position, moving on to the financial impact, I'll just say that moving, authorizing the public works project manager and freezing the city engineer would come at about a $19,000 decrease in the, you know, in the required budget, so it'd be at about a $19,000 savings for the budget for this position. And with that, even though, you know, this is an under-hire that we are searching for right now, I would just like to say personally that, you know, both candidates we did receive were well-qualified, and I believe would bring high value to the city, so yes, it is an under-hire, but only because they would be discharging a different set of duties within the public works department, so. With that, I am happy to answer any questions that the council may have, and thank you for your time, and I guess I'll, I'll end with my staff recommendation, which is that the council authorized the creation of the public works project manager position, and to authorize awarding up to step three of the salary scale for the position for the recruitment. Thank you.
All right, thank you Brendan, anyone from the council have questions? Does anyone from the public wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll close public comment.
No, you did a good job, you answered all my questions, every time I came up with one, you finished my sentence. I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city manager to create a new public works project manager position, and freeze the city engineer position, add a new salary classification of F54 to the full-time pay rate schedule, and authorize the city manager to start an employee at step three for the F54 salary classification.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Our next item is city manager's report.
Thank you Mayor Long, council, I'd just like to pull up my PowerPoint, which just disappeared, I think, when I had the other one going away. Looks like it's going to be a night of technical difficulties. Now Zoom is, there we go. All right, so up on the screen, you should have the city manager's report, so I just have a few things to report, the first one, I'd like to show the meeting schedule for the upcoming meeting, so the first meeting coming up is on August 4, 5:30, it's a special city council meeting. This one's important, we're going to be taking up the, the future of Fbid, this is a topic that came to the council in the past, but I, I have had a, a number of calls and comments, and I know that there's some discussion in the community about the future of Fbid, so I think this is going to be an important meeting, one that we really want to see our business owners at. I'm going to be doing some direct outreach this week, we just settled on the meeting and confirmed the meeting today, so we didn't have more time, but I'll be reaching out to some of our business owners to make sure that we get them to that meeting, so August 4, 5:30, we, we can have the public participate via Zoom at that meeting, but we won't be able to have the council participate via Zoom, so it's important we have all of our council members that we can, council member Johnson won't be there, so please let me know if you won't be able to make that meeting. The next regular council meeting will be on August 15, at 6 o'clock PM, again, we'll be bringing back a resolution to allow the hybrid meetings at that meeting, so if in the future council members can't attend in person, they can attend via the hybrid platform, and members of the public, from here on out, we're anticipating having them be able to participate via the, the Zoom platform. Our next planning commission meeting is on August 9, at 6 o'clock PM, our next Rona Community Recreation Park District is on August 3, at 2:30 PM, and that's, there's some really interesting things happening with the Rona Community Recreation and Park District, there's been significant progress made, they're on the verge of being able to identify the cost of a potential pool project, and how that cost would translate into an assessment benefit for the, for the district, so I think it's important, one of the things that I want to do in the future is, is give the council a more detailed update, and be able to have the council weigh in on what the district is doing and what they think, and again, the Fortuna City Council appoints three members of that five-person board, so the, the City of Fortuna really is in the driver's seat, the other two members are appointed by the county, and a small, and a portion of the tax comes from what would normally come to the city from property tax, and also to the county, so the city should really be aware and informed of what's happening, I think providing some input back to the recreation district board will be important moving forward. And then last but not least, Measure E, our next Measure E committing meeting is on September 20, and that's at, at 5:30 PM. I reported on a few of the items, a couple other things I wanted to update the council on, we talked about Fbid in the Rona Community Recreation District Assessment Benefit, the, our consultant who's designing the police facility project submitted the plans for building permit review, so we're excited to be at that milestone, so it's our hope that once the building review, permit reviews is completed, that the comments can be addressed, and that we can prepare that project for bidding, we're really excited about moving that one forward, and, and we're thrilled that it's at the building permit review stage. Also been working on a Fortuna Senior Center MOU, the council designated $60,000 to go to the Fortuna Senior Center, I worked with our city attorney, we got a draft MOU over to the Fortuna Senior Center for review, so we should be moving forward, they're very anxious, they've been calling every week, and so I'm glad that we have that over in their court, and we tried to really produce an MOU that captures the benefits that they bring to the community and the programs without putting a, a huge burden on them as a part of that MOU, so I, I think we've, we have a good chance of having that done this month and executed. A couple of parks projects, I was pleased to see the parks make life better, there's two exciting projects that I've been involved with, as well as our director of public works and our parks director, and a couple, and, and the council should see each of these independently, but we've been working on a project to upgrade the basketball courts at Rona Park, and we have a landscape architect working on that project, and so she's provided a concept design, our, our director of public works and city engineer is working on the front-end document, so I'm excited to, that we should be able to put that out to bid within the next month, and get some, get some bid result, you know, get some, get a construction contract out there to improve those basketball courts, it's been a long time in the coming, but that's a Measure E funded project that, I think that'll be the first real big, you know, significant one, that we put something on the ground with those funds. And then last but not least, we're also working on the Newburgh Park Master Plan and Design, when we did the last plan, again, that's, that's including public works, parks, everyone, there's, there's a lot of us working on that, but when we did the original concept plan, it, it didn't consider the bike park during the plan, because at that point it had been kind of not cared for, and since then it's been upgraded, and it's one of our more popular facilities, and so we had to redesign it, and so I'll give you a sneak peek, and, you know, at the risk of getting into a conversation ahead of when we really should, but one of the things that we were able to do, you could see the bike park is located in the center, with that staying there, the bike, the bike park originally was going to move over to, or, excuse me, the skate park was going to be located near the front, but with the bike park there, we had to change the orientation of the soccer field, so, again, this is very draft, but we're realigning the soccer fields, which requires realigning the parking lot, you can see, so there's two high school regulation soccer fields, which are on the right side, and would take up a large portion, in between the two fields, there's a restroom, and then there's an open area which could be used for just about anything, there will be trails, they're not all shown, the trails here, but there will be a number of trails that, that connect to the McLean site, as well as access the existing fields, and then connect over to the Newburgh Park that exists now, a smaller soccer field, and then there's an area for the skate park to go in the middle, and so we've ran that by the Fortuna Skate Park Collective, and we're excited to, to further refine this, this is another one that we want to bring back to council, and get council to weigh in on these parks projects, again, Measure E funded, huge interest from the community, and, you know, we have some funding, a significant amount of funding to be able to put these on the ground, we probably won't have enough to do everything, but we're really excited to be working on those, we know how much the public enjoys the parks, and so we just wanted to highlight those two projects for, because it's a park makes lives, but parks make life better kind of night, and just wanted to let the council know we're making significant progress. Our hope is to be able to enter into a design contract under one of our on-call contracts with one of our local firms here, to be able to start the design work and come up with a list of improvements to the park, in a order of which we could do them, and again, have a, have an item where we can talk with the council and really get the council's feedback as well, so. And that concludes my staff report.
I have a couple of questions. First, do you have any idea how long it'll be before the police department goes out to bid?
It depends on the building permit review, I'm definitely going to be pushing to see that happen as quickly as possible, so I hope that we can finish the review in four weeks, and then depending on the number of corrections that are needed, I think it would take probably another four weeks for correction, so, you know, I think the soonest, a couple months, we'll be working on the bid, the front-end bid documents simultaneously, so I think two months, if we really push, we should be able to have that out to bid.
And my other question was, on the parks, is, is there going to be a fence all the way around that new park, too?
The, we hope to be able to take all the interior fences out, and to not have a fence along the creek, and take, take down the fence on the roadway, we want to wait until we, you know, what the, you know, it might make sense to leave those fences there during construction, to use them as a construction fence, but one of the things we've been talking about internally is, can we get some trails, can we just have the space used, and so on a staff level, we're going to be looking at that and see if we can do some, some work just kind of informally to find a, a kind of intermediate use between the full construction of the improvements and what's there now, which is basically a fenced-off pasture. So, yes, I think we'll see some adaptation of that site to allow some use, even if it's not a highly-developed use in the near future, but we want to think about it and make sure that, you know, we don't put people somewhere where it's dangerous, or where, you know, they don't understand where the property lines are, and we want to make sure not to upset any neighbors, so there's a, there's some things we need to think about, and, you know, what we need to do, instead of just kind of taking down the fences and say, okay, everybody, go for it, like, probably taking down the barbed wire fence would probably be a good one, so. And there's some old fencing and other things, and some trails that could be built with relatively minimal effort.
Thank you. All right, any future agenda items that we don't already have on our list from anyone? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to city council reports, Mike Losi.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, mine's going to be really short, I have two reports, but I will make both of those on our next August 15 regular meeting, that's all I have.
Whoa, we better write that one down. Jeremy?
Well, we already discussed Fbid, and in July, there wasn't a lot of city business going on, but there was some fun activities, and I want to say thank you to Siana, the city clerk, and others for heading up the float building. The majority, well, not majority, but several, the council participated in that, and Siana's vision, and I think Kathy Rexford also, from the Parks, Parks Director's Office for her participation as well. And I just wanted to say how proud I was of everybody throughout the month of July, especially with the city and the, and the parks and rec, and the road crews and everything that did all the hard, heavy lifting, and just made it look so effortless throughout the entire month of July, so just, nothing else to report, just some gratitude for hard workers.
All right, thanks Jeremy, Tammy?
And I'll just add to that, that that float did get a first-place ribbon. That was a very, July was a really busy month for the City of Fortuna, not just the city, but the employees, too, we had the 3rd of July Festival, even though it rained, it was really well-attended, and then we had the Chili Cook-Off, and the, the chamber was able to use some of the tourism marketing money to buy rodeo tickets to some of the events and some hats, and I had the honor of actually being able to walk around and hand some of those out, so people were really excited when they got a set of tickets or a new hat, so that was a really fun thing to do. Then there was the Junior Rodeo and the rodeo, which were all very well-attended, my grandson was actually in the Junior Rodeo for the first time this year, so it was scary but fun to watch him. Then we had Auto Expo, which also was a big success, a lot of people attended, and I just really have to send out a lot of thanks to our city employees, because without all the extra help and all the hard work that they put in, these events wouldn't be able to happen, so we're really lucky that we have great city employees. And then I also want to put out a thank you to some of the surrounding police departments, Arcata, Highway Patrol, Riadell, Ferndell, Eureka, and Cal Fire, I think that was most of them, for all chipping in and helping us with security at the 3rd of July event and the rodeo event, so thank you very much to our neighboring cities. It's, I think Fortuna has some of the best events here, so, and we're lucky we have the employees to back them, so thank you, everybody, and that's all I have to report.
All right, thanks. So our rodeo float got first place for theme, which is a big, big deal, because normally we just enter under Civic, and we don't have a lot of competition, we still win, but this one was bigger than that, so we were very proud. Fortuna Fireworks Festival, it did rain, we still had, I'd say, a moderate turnout, and cleanup was a lot easier because we did have less people, and we ended up being able to pay for the entire event, due to the generosity of all of our businesses and the sale of the wristbands, so it turned out okay. I picked my car for Auto Expo on Saturday, but I didn't tell my daughter, because it was her wedding, and I kind of sneaked downtown, and I did it really, really fast, and she never knew, because she was going to freak out if she knew I was gone. The 11-year-old Ill River Little League All-Stars had a great season, they finally lost to a Reading team in the, the final championship game, but they played awesome, and we were totally proud of those kids, and my grandson was one of them, of course. My League of California Housing Community and Economic Development Committee is done for the year, so I have no more meetings on that, and I do plan on attending, attending the Redwood Empire Division meeting in Point Arena on August 19. I think that's it for me, too. So with that, we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thanks you, everybody, for coming.